The Executive Session of the Wayne Board of Education Regular Meeting of June 16, 2022 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Nollis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey, 07470. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Roll call, Mr. Moffitt.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Present.
Mr. Fatale?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mr. Prosakos?
Present.
Mrs. Putup?
Here.
And Mrs. Wenting?
Here.
We're going to rise for the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening will be a resolution regarding an Eagle Scout. So if you would please come up. Good evening. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America was founded in 1910 to teach boys to be good citizens and leaders, and whereas more than 5 million young boys are members of this organization, and whereas the purpose of Boy Scouting is to inspire boys with the highest ideals of character, conduct, patriotism, and service that they may become happy and resourceful citizens, and whereas Joseph Scarraly III is a student and is a resident of Wayne Township and has completed the Boy Scout requirements for the rank of Eagle Scout, Troop 108. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne Board of Education recognizes Joseph Scarraly III on this special occasion and congratulates him for his outstanding achievements and special efforts in fulfilling the stringent character, service, and leadership requirements of Eagle Scout. Honoring you this day from the Board of Education, June 16, 2022. Congratulations. And I have something for you. Thank you. And I'm sure everyone would be interested in what you did for your project because it did. It benefited students in our schools. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Administration. Thank you very much for your support of my project and for recognizing me and for inviting me to this meeting. I've been a mentor for the Wayne Hill Stars Program, which stands for Student Teaching and Reaching Students, for all four years. And when it came time to do my Eagle Scout service project, I want to do something to help the Wayne Hill Stars Program students. My Eagle Scout service project called Sensor Bin Sweep for Wayne Hills High School included 50 sensor bins, mobile shelving, rug, and accessories. And sensor bins are filled with various materials and tools and are helpful for students with autism and cognitive, emotional, and other disabilities. And the sensor bins reduce stress, have a calming effect, focus attention, and expand learning opportunities for Wayne Hills High School students. I appreciate the help I received from the Wayne Hills community and many others. I hope my project helps raise awareness of the Wayne Hill Stars students and in some way help the challenges they face daily. Thank you.
You forgot your plaque.
Thank you, Ferris. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I would ask the public's indulgence. There's two matters of business that we did not get finished in our executive session this evening. They're very important and germane to the public portion that we have to conduct later this evening. So I'm going to ask for a motion from a member of the board to reconvene into executive session.
Motion.
Thank you. And we will come back after we finish those two items of business. Thank you very much. Where are we going?
School position contract. Then you're all set.
Right.
We got it. I'm waiting for the light to... No, go ahead. All right. Thank you very much for your patience. This evening's meeting is back in session. Mrs... Oh, did you want to say something? Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Madam President. I understand the importance of this meeting. I understand why most of you are all here. And I look forward to this discussion. You will hear more about this without me divulging any information that you will hear later on. However, I just got a phone call. I do have a family emergency. As most of you do know, I am pretty much down the middle and willing to listen to everybody's concerns. However, I do have to go. And you will be satisfied at the end of the meeting with what's going on. I have perfect confidence in my colleagues here. And that being said, I apologize, but I do have a family emergency I was just alerted to. So, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy? Okay. At this time, Mrs. Kazan will read a statement regarding our business partners here in Wayne and some of the other towns that do a lot to help our students.
Thank you, Madam President. Make sure my friend can hear me. This is something that's always been near and dear to me because most of these partners in our community are very active in working with our special needs school population by allowing them to come to their businesses and learn how to do jobs that they would otherwise not have had a chance to learn. So, they do this for free, and we're very grateful for them. So, tonight, we recognize them. Whereas the Wayne Board of Education recognizes that the overall well-being of virtually every community is defined and judged by the strength of its public schools. Whereas the Wayne Board of Education recognizes the most important stakeholders in every school system are students and their parents. Whereas the Wayne Board of Education also recognizes that local employers and other businesses also have a vested interest in success of schools. Whereas through its policies and practices, the district has sought to create appropriate arrangements enabling employers and businesses to support learning opportunities in and out of the classroom through direct donations, contributions toward instructional programs and activities, volunteer projects, providing mentoring opportunities, work-study placements, and occupational training placements. Whereas many arrangements between school businesses and employers that have grown out of this environment have brought out a profound change to the way schools and businesses work together, as opposed to maintaining traditional philanthropic relationships. Whereas the Board of Education and the Wayne business community recognizes the benefits of true partnerships that support the long-term interests of students and schools while providing for sustained business involvement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne Board of Education recognizes the following businesses and employers for their efforts to enhance educational opportunities for the students of Wayne Township. The list is on the agenda. It's quite lengthy. I recommend everyone please take a look at it and patronize those businesses to thank them for their service to the school community. Thank you. And thank you to them.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. Dr. Toback?
Okay, so on to the administrative summary report. A great way to start my report is with our students. In particular, congratulations to the class of 2022 and all of our other students in transitional grades who are moving ahead with their academic careers in the Wayne Township Public Schools. We look forward to celebrating with you during the many events we have planned for our students and families in the coming week. We wish all of our high school graduates great success as they move on to the next chapter in their lives. Reminder to all members of the community that our annual end-of-year newsletter will be distributed next week. The end-of-year newsletter is a celebration of the class of 2022, along with other interesting news and stories from across the school district. The end-of-year newsletter is definitely worthwhile reading. For the public, the agenda for this meeting is in many ways tied to the summer and our upcoming academic year, and it includes a variety of appointments. Under Section 5 Emergent School Resource Finance Number 2, there's a resolution regarding the Passaic County Improvement Authority, the PCIA leasing program. This leasing program, if approved, will bring new voice-over-IP phone systems for Wayne Valley, George Washington, JFK, and the Transportation Office. In addition, the funding will be used to continue our one-to-one computing for our students and also to replace a number of vehicles from our transportation and facilities fleet. Now that we're emerging from the pandemic, we're also venturing out in the same way as we did prior to the pandemic with student trips. So you'll see a number of overnight field trips for band camp and one in-state and one out-of-state football game. You'll also see a resolution under Section Q, School Resource. This is a shared services agreement between the township and the school district to construct the long-awaited sidewalk that will run along the reservoir to Point View Shopping Center. The construction will be completed by the township, and the project is expected to be finished in August in time for the start of the next school year. The HIB report, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents. In the Wayne Township Public School District, there were 11 incidents investigated since my last report, and eight of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of an actual HIB incident.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. We will have a report on our end-of-year goals.
Do you want to have this thing?
Sure.
We're ready? Okay. Can everybody hear me? Pretty well? Okay. So what we'd like to do is, for this presentation, we'd like to go over our district goals for this past year and to provide the board and the community with an update of where we are with those goals and what we were able to do with those goals. The Wayne Township Public Schools, interestingly, do not have a strategic plan. There's no five-year plan. There's no 10-year plan. But what we've operated off of is a series of goals. In some cases, one-year goals, two-year goals, in some cases, three-year goals. And those goals make up the foundation for all the different ways that the district moves ahead. So since I've been here, there's probably like somewhere between 40 and 50 goals that have been established collaboratively with the Board of Ed and with the community and with the Teachers Association and the staff. So some of the goals, just if you go back over time, I thought it was kind of interesting to go back. We have high school block scheduling, right? That change, that change at the high school is a result of a district goal. Our new science labs that we have, that was a district goal. Our new elementary math and language arts program, district goal. Our dual-credit classes at the high school, district goal. K-Rap, it was a district goal. Full-day kindergarten, district goal. Early childhood center, district goal. The Wayne Township Learning Center, which is the hub of all of our professional development, in-house professional development we have in the district, was also a district goal. Along with our health and wellness initiatives, one-to-one computing, and the expansion of our ESL program, all those are district goals as well. So the goal system is very important for the district. And like I said, it drives innovation, it drives progress. It's a direction for the district to follow. So this year, in some ways related to the pandemic, we had just three goals. But our first goal was really our main priority. It was the pandemic recovery. So would you like to go to the... Okay. So basically, we knew going into the school year that we had our fair share of challenges, academic challenges, because we knew that obviously, learning remotely for extended periods of time in the prior year was definitely going to affect progress that our students are going to make academically. But we also know that our students were falling behind academically because of other issues that affect their learning, like depression and anxiety. So Ms. Reschman, if you'd like to, go ahead.
Sure. So the focus this year, as Dr. Toback just said, was to address student and staff needs resulting from the pandemic. Academic intervention programs were developed. Additional mental health clinicians were contracted with to support students who were struggling with anxiety, depression, school avoidance. We didn't want to task our counselors, who already have very comprehensive jobs. It was overwhelming to meet all these needs, and it was a priority of ours to make sure that all of our students' needs were met in school and that they were coming to school each day. We continued with permanent subs in each building to just maintain consistency, have a familiar face, and someone who knows the instructional staff and is familiar with curriculum, with our email system, and a regular in the building. This slide just reinforces a lot of what was on the first slide. And again, just to elaborate on the before and after-school programs, the intervention programs, we had different qualifiers for students. Secondary schools offered support during lunch and after-school. We had programs before and after-school for elementary school students. Last summer, screener was administered to all students. It was sent electronically to parents, and this helped us just to plan and inform the counseling programs. And we had our nursing supervisor who was there to support all of our schools also in anything that required immediate attention. We had three additional part-time counselors in the elementary schools, and tri-state coalition was used to support trauma and those students who had the most significant needs. Let me open up this goal. Goal 2 was, this was year 2 of the goal for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Again, this was our commitment to making sure that we look at our programs through a lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the focus this year was establishing a process in place for addressing book challenges, and these were met at the building level. We developed a checklist for teachers to use when determining the appropriateness of resources in terms of alignment with standards and inclusion in classroom libraries, just to make sure that we have access to appropriate resources for students. We also did an audit of the digital resources in place. Many of our digital resources push out news articles and weekly, monthly, new articles and different curriculum materials that can be used as a supplement to reinforce what's being taught in class. Doesn't always have time to screen for every teacher and for every director to look at and read through because they're being pushed out weekly. Sometimes things also are being pushed out by the level. We administer different tests, and then things are pushed out at their Lexile level. So we did make the determination that some of these resources were not appropriate to continue with at this time. We didn't want parents to be blindsided or in a situation where something was used that was inappropriate. We didn't want teachers to be in a situation where they didn't have time to appropriately vet something out. We also have a leadership team at each building, and parents were involved in these committees. And these were the committees that reviewed materials and book challenges, anything that may have been considered controversial. And, you know, this is a practice that we'll continue to have in place. It was very proactive in just informing and understanding what the concerns are, clarifying policies and procedures, and addressing anything that may needed to be looked at differently or changed. Another part of this goal was really refining our HR practices. We became involved with a couple of new job fairs. We are very consistent now. Any candidate that comes in is asked the same questions, and we make sure that we have a procedure that's followed for all interviews at all levels with all candidates. This next goal is planning for the future.
Okay. Ready? So as far as this goal goes, this is something that really started with the Board of Ed in December, the presentation by the district's demographer, and also combined with a presentation from our district architect. So it was a retreat that was held where basically all of our board members were brought up to speed on all these different projects that were in various stages of planning. Okay? And you can see exactly those projects. And as you know, we have a number of new housing units that are going to be coming to Wayne. So what impact will that have on the school? That's really the basis for the goal. Right? And so what that led to is a discussion of, okay, well, if we're going to see additional students, and we're going to see additional students in very specific parts of town, what is that going to look like over the next 10 years? So the Board of Ed actually looked out over 10 years, looked at the different projects that are out there, approximate completion time, the impact on the school in terms of number of students, and what attendance zones each of those students would be in. And so how would that affect the different schools? So at that point, the board thought about, well, we may need to move ahead with a referendum. And so at this point, the board heard a presentation from a public relations expert about how to start to incorporate the community in a discussion about a possible referendum. The board then heard more specific information from the architect about different projects. The board then heard from their financial advisor about the financial impact of these projects and what different options might look like in terms of financial impact to the board, and obviously, the impact that would have on taxpayers. And so now, the board is at a point where if the board would like to move ahead with a referendum, we have a retreat planned for next week where the board will basically take all this information that they've been given over the past few months and put it all together to come up with a final plan for the future in terms of our facilities. So in a lot of cases, it involves potential work, right? There's priority work. There's work that absolutely has to be done, no matter what. But there's also some other projects that are important for the future of the district academically that, okay, maybe they don't... It's not something that has to be done, but it's something that would really enhance our academic program. So there's just, there's a lot to consider, and that's something that's going to go on at our retreat. So that's basically it. Understanding the enrollment change. So I'd say the board is definitely, we've met that goal. And that's it? Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, sir. Thank you.
This is yours? No, this is yours. I'll take care of it.
Mr. Moffett? Revisions to agenda items, please?
Yes, we have a few tonight. One is under T, Emergent Human Resources. We'll be adding attachments that weren't inadvertently not attached. So there's three of those support attachments under T3, approval of additional compensation. Number 8 is CST Summer Case Management Evaluations and Various Meetings. Again, we'll be adding three attachments. Anybody would like to see them, I'll have them at my place tonight. If you'd like to come over, I could share that with you. Or tomorrow, you could check the website. We'll make sure they're attached. Under, the next two items are under School Resource Legal. We'll be adding X1 tonight, which is Approval of Examination for Cause Administrative Leave. And it reads as follows. Whereas the employee ID number 8019 is employed by the Wayne Township Board of Education, and whereas, based upon information provided by the administration and the judgment of the board, the employee has exhibited evidence of a deviation from normal physical and mental health, which is adversely affecting the employee's ability to perform essential job functions, and whereas, as a result of foregoing, the board desires to direct the employee to submit to a physical and psychiatric and/or psychological examination pursuant to NJSA 18A:16-2, NJAC 6A:32-8, I should say 6.2. Again, that's 6A32-6.3, and Board of Education Policy 3161. Now therefore, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, employee ID number 8019 is hereby required and directed to submit to a physical examination by the school district's designated physician. And a written medical report detailing the results of such examination is to be provided confidentially to the board. And be it further resolved, employee ID number 8019 is further required and directed to submit to a psychiatric examination and/or psychological examination as the board may hereafter designate. And a written report detailing the result of such examinations to be provided confidentially to the board within 30 days of this date, June 16, 2022. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools... Further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools is hereby authorized and directed to prepare and provide the employee with appropriate statutory notice of the board's action and the reason therefore. Second action that we'll be adding to tonight's agenda is X2, which reads, Amendment to the Shared Service Agreement for School Resource Officers and Class III Special Law Enforcement Officers. That reads, Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent and School Business Administrator, approve the amendment to the Shared Service Agreement for School Resource Officers and Class III Special Law Enforcement Officers between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Township of Wayne, as discussed in executive session and attached as for reference. That concludes tonight's additions and changes.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. If you see it on our agenda, you can speak to it at this time. There will be a public portion later on in the program. Thank you. So this portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Thank you.
Second.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Motion? Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Fatale. Thank you.
Jim Frieswick, 1212 Summer Hill Road. I'm here to express my objections to item U6, which is a proposed revision to policy number 0167, Public Participation in Board Meetings. As I argued at the last board meeting, this proposal should not be adopted because it imposes too much of a restriction on the public's freedom of speech. Prior to August 19th of last year, the public had a right to speak for five minutes, twice during each public session, 10 minutes at each public session for a total of 20 minutes. On August 19th, this board amended district policy number 0167 to reduce by 40% the time allowed the public, the time allowed for the public to speak. It reduced the time from five minutes to three minutes. Again, the public could speak twice for three minutes at each session, so for a total of 12 minutes at the board meetings. So the time was reduced from 20 minutes down to 12. Tonight, you're voting on a policy which would further restrict the public's freedom of speech. freedom of speech from 12 minutes down to eight minutes. You would allow the public to speak for only three minutes at the first session, public session, and five minutes at the second public session for a total of eight minutes. They would not be allowed to speak for a second time at either session. And you're proposing to reduce the first public session to 30 minutes and the second public session to 90 minutes, which would restrict the public participation at the first session to only 10 members of the public if they all spoke for the maximum of three minutes each. And it would also reduce the maximum number of people who can speak to 18 members during the second session if they all spoke for a maximum of five minutes. I think a better policy would be to allow five minutes for each person to speak at each public session and then allow each member an additional two minutes after everyone else has spoken at each session. So that would be seven minutes total at each session for a total of 14 minutes per meeting. And I also would not limit either public session to any particular amount of time. Is that it? Oh, thank you.
Hi, Lovely Madara, 22 Bolanzav. I'm actually a graduating senior from Wayne Valley, class 2022. I want to discuss one of the goals that was presented regarding the appropriateness of books in school curriculum and resources. So a great deal of this affects students just like me, which is why we showed up today, to make sure that we're heard and represented. So my question is, how do you plan on addressing misinformation when it comes to your school curriculum? There's a lot of things that goes on, like that goes, that goes on social media about what's in the curriculum or not. And so as many of you know, we are outside this morning, just like outside right before this meeting, and we are giving out pride flags. And we had this one woman come up to us and non-consensually show our student group pornographic imagery from Facebook. And she claimed that was in the school curriculum. And when I asked for sources and for information, she could not give the author or the title of the book and where she found it on, in the school curriculum. So this type of misinformation is incredibly harmful to our community as it divides us on an issue that's pretty much non-existent. So how do you plan on addressing this social media misinformation and other examples of it that directly contradict and challenge the school's curriculum without any solid backing? Thank you.
Cindy Simon, 1444 Rides Road. First, I'd actually like to start by complimenting the idea of the book clubs in middle school that's associated with the summer reading list. I think that was really creative. I'll give you guys a thumbs up for that. The second thing that I wanted to speak to goes to not the limiting of the amount of time people can speak in the public sections, but limiting the amount, the number of people that can speak. I think as elected officials, it is your duty to give the public an opportunity to be heard and, and to share what their views are, whatever those views are. And, you know, if that happens to take more than 90 minutes, you know, at some board meeting, that is the job of elected officials to listen. And believe me, I am sympathetic with all of you. I used to be on the board when we used to go till 1 o'clock in the morning. So I know, I hear, I hear both sides of this, but we really have to give the public a chance to be heard. That's how we be a town. That's how we work together. Thank you.
We have some retirements to celebrate this evening. Mr. Fatale?
Congratulations to Lee Agnes on her retirement from the Wayne Township Public Schools. Lee has been teaching special education in Wayne for 15 years. For most of her career, she taught self-contained classes. At the onset, she worked at Pakonak Tunis in Lafayette Elementary Schools, with most of her teaching years spent at JFK. This year, she is splitting her days at Randall Carter and Fallon as a resource room teacher. For many years, Lee has dedicated herself to impacting the lives of countless children in Wayne and helping them soar. Her hard work, patience, and kindness will never be forgotten. Lee plans to spend her retirement time doing some traveling and enjoying time with family. We wish her nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Barbara Arbucci. We are here today to show our respect and love for Ms. Barbara Arbucci. Barbara has spent 10 years supporting students and programs as a paraprofessional. During her tenure, she has served in the capacity of a one-to-one, shared, and classroom paraprofessional. Barbara has touched so many lives along the way, including fellow colleagues, teachers, families, and most importantly, students. She always puts students first and treats all with kindness and respect. Barbara was a joy to work with and has always provided consistency and diligence to all assignments. Barbara, you will be missed. Wayne Township Public Schools wishes you good luck in the future endeavors. Enjoy retirement with your family.
Mrs. Kumar?
Herbert Feeks. Herbert Feeks will be retiring from the transportation department on July 1, 2022. Herb began his career in Wayne on August 26, 2002. Over the course of 20 years of service to the Wayne Township Public Schools, he has been dedicated to his work responsibility of transporting students with great care and concern every day of his employment. Herb has truly been an asset to the transportation department, and his daily work ethic and dedication will be missed. For many years, he took a midday route to transport our youngest students, our kindergarteners, and preschoolers. His years of service and commitment to transporting the students of the district will be hard to replace. Herb will now have more time to watch his beloved Yankees play ball and work at the Jackals games at Montclair State University. He will be missed, but never forgotten. From all your friends and coworkers, best wishes for a long, happy, and healthy retirement.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. Okay, action on agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to pull the physical contract and send it back to committee for further evaluation.
Motion, do I have a second?
Did you say physician?
Physician, yes, physician. Sorry, I apologize. The physician.
Second, Mrs. Wintick? So we have one item pulled, action on most of the agenda.
Madam President, I'd move the
We'll have a vote on that first.
Oh, yes, I'm very sorry. We have a motion on, on the table. All those in favor of pulling that item from the agenda?
I'll take roll.
Mr. Moffett will take roll.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
And Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd move to make a motion to move the entire agenda, Mrs. Kazan.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Bubba. Okay. Motion to move the entire agenda. Discussion on any item, please. Seeing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes, on all items abstain, except for abstention on X1.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes to everything and I'll abstain on emergent T number eight. Yes to everything else.
Mr. Prasakos?
No on L2, abstain on U6.
I'm sorry, the abstain was for?
No on L2, abstain on U6.
U6.
And yes to everything else.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Wintick?
No on L2 and abstain on U6, yes to everything else.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Movements carry.
Thank you. Okay, we have committee reports this evening. Mr. Pavlak?
The Facilities and Transportation Committee met this evening, myself, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Fatale, Mr. Tebbitz, Mr. Romaine, Mr. Skabitsky, and Mr. Moffett, of course. We reviewed tonight's items on the agenda. We reviewed the minutes from the previous meeting. The Schidman property is out for appraisal. We reviewed some policies regarding facility use, maintenance and repair, and emergency and crisis situations as far as drills go. We did review two positions, one that's being filled from the budget next year and the second, which may be needed down the road at some point. We have a security project going on Wayne Hills, Skyward Colfax, and Wayne Valley. Our esports center is up and running at Wayne Hills and soon to be coming to Wayne Valley. Our generator project at Pines Lake in the bus depot are nearing completion. We're also, the HVAC, the HVAC system at Wayne Valley is being, the controls are being updated so that we don't have a school that's 100 degrees in the middle of the night in better energy efficiency, also to increase proper airflow with COVID. Our fields are going to be going under major renovations at all the high schools in-house with our facilities, grounds crews. We're going to be upgrading and cleaning up a lot of the fields over the summer. We have a hefty list of projects that our facilities department is undertaking this summer, from painting in schools to new facades. The gym floors at Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills are being stripped down to bare and they're going, going to be repainted with logos and striping necessary for our athletics. Our transportation department, basically we're same old, same old. We don't have enough bus drivers. Our outside, the outside contracts have, if not doubled in some cases. So we're looking at all different alternatives. We did have the, we do have two bus drivers in training now and three more in the process of hiring, so hopefully that will help alleviate some of our shortage in manpower. We also are in cooperation with the Transportation Safety Authority. We're going to be doing some security training and also some review of our security policies for school buses. And the best part is TSA does it for free. So we will always take free. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Mr. Bubba, thank you.
Personnel committee tonight met with myself, Mrs. Putup, and Mr. Prasakos. Our administrators in attendance were Mrs. Clark, Mr. Moffett, and Mrs. Tebbitz. Tonight, we discussed the, we reviewed the April 21 personnel committee minutes. We reviewed tonight's agenda items with the additional attachments that were added tonight. We discussed an employee leave. We discussed two changes from a Strauss Esme for policies numbers 3161 and 4161. We heard two new facility job descriptions. And we had a request for tuition reimbursement from an employee. And that was the end of our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Those are our committee reports. Okay. The next portion of this meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about any employee or student. The board bears no responsibility for those comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under old business. Do I have a mover? Mrs. Kumar? Mr. Prasakos? Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, Alan Asart, 61 Brandon. Did you know that the seahorse is the only species in which the male gives birth? It's true. No other species, not even humans. After seeing the state sex ed curriculum online, I was flabbergasted that impressionable children will be taught inappropriate subject matter. If examples of this subject matter are inappropriate for board meetings, then they're inappropriate for our classrooms and libraries. The existence of man and woman, boys and girls, males and females, who can have different sexual preferences and feelings, and learning about human biology and body parts and their biological reproductive functions can maybe be a part of an 11th or 12th grade curriculum without infusing any political ideology, proselytizing, false narrative, confusion, interrogation, or unauthorized surveying. Anything else is for the parents at home with their own individual values. Parents were supposed to be involved in the writing of this curriculum. Now we learn it'll be written by the wizard hiding behind the curtain over the summer. Sure, we can provide feedback on let's talk, but the curriculum will already be written. This should have started earlier with parents a part of the process before the end of this school year. But you'll write it as you see fit. Thoughts that disagree with you be damned. But at least we can opt out of it, which makes me wonder, if this is also appropriate, why the opt-out option? Why not an opt-in option instead? I have to move on to something else because that's very important to me. At a board meeting last fall, we were told that since the implementation of Common Core Math in 2010, 30% of Wayne students are failing math. According to U.S. News &amp; World Report using 2021 enrollment data in our district, only 63% of elementary students tested at or above the proficiency level for math, about 1,700 out of 2,700, 63% for junior high, and 50/54% for high school, 1,300 out of about 2,450. Is it the kids or the curriculum? Because as of 2020, I also found that 17% of Wayne students are IEPs. Further research shows that kids' brains are not developed enough to process and grasp the difficult and not age-appropriate Common Core Math concepts, which leads to frustration and loss of self-confidence, which I've seen with my own daughter. Now with some extra help she'll get, I was told, quote, "She'll learn math the way it was supposed to be taught." Shouldn't that be happening anyway? The worst-kept secret is that nobody likes the Common Core Math program. You have a responsibility to change it so kids can learn math with age-appropriate concepts to achieve with confidence, function in real life, and not be asked the unanswerable question, why does 2 plus 2 equal 4? As the last election showed, it's time to remove all personal and political agendas, trends, and ideologies from the entire school curriculum. Start doing what's right by our kids and the taxpayers, not for Trenton, or for money, or for you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandy and I live in Wayne. A quick question. When you did the committee reports, I didn't hear anything from the Education Committee. So I was just wondering if we're going to get a report from the Education Committee tonight at our Board of Education meeting? Thank you. That's it.
Ardit Cardenas, Sunset Terrace. What I'm about to read regarding the new health and PE standards are available at newjersey.gov/education. And if you haven't already, I encourage everyone to look for yourself. I just randomly picked some of the information and expectations for personal growth and development. Expectation 2.1.5 PGD.4 states, explain common human sexual development and role of hormones, e.g., romantic and sexual feelings, masturbation, mood swings, et cetera. Expectation 2.1.5 SSH.2 differentiate between sexual orientation and gender identity. Expectation demonstrate ways to promote dignity and respect for all, e.g., or e.g., or sexual orientation, gender identity, race, socioeconomic status, immigration status, and family configuration." Here are some expectations by the end of grade eight. Expectation 2.1.8 CHS.3, "Identify the state and federal laws related to minors' access to sexual healthcare services." Not for nothing, the minor's sexual healthcare should be directed to the parent. Expectation 2.1.8 SSH.9, "Define vaginal, oral, and anal sex." That was pretty uncomfortable, right? But what are kids going to do? You know, kids are curious and computer savvy. And so what's the first thing they're going to do when the teacher tells them about anal sex? They're going to go home and they're going to Google it. And I was going to read what I found, but it was totally not appropriate for this setting. But I encourage you to go home, Google it, and tell me it's not obscene. I'd also like to point out there are school districts that find the new curriculum inappropriate. East Hanover School District is going to accommodate students and parents' requests. The Garwood Board of Ed passed a resolution that states they shall not adopt their curriculum. And here's another Board of Ed that's doing it right. The Montague, New Jersey Board of Ed just voted seven to zero not to adopt the curriculum. And here are some of the things they had to say. Whereas the Montague Board of Ed refuses to approve curriculum that would result in subject matters including, but not limited to, oral sex, anal sex, masturbation, and gender identity being discussed with children at all grade levels. Whereas, it is undisputed that generally speaking, the State Department of Education does not mandate curriculum. Whereas, it is also undisputed that the authority to approve instructional materials is vested in the local Board of Education. State standards are not curriculum, and they are not mandated. What they are is four measly CUSAC points. And I can assure you that parents and prospective homebuyers, taxpayers, are more concerned with the quality of their kid's curriculum and education than four CUSAC points. Other boards are not adopting the curriculum, and we respectfully implore that you do not adopt this curriculum, this controversial and inappropriate curriculum as well.
Good evening, Diane Daff, 36 Lake Trail East. And I'd like to speak about the updated health and phys ed standards, which, to my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, involve one lesson for grade two, one lesson for grade five, and one lesson for grade eight. And these lessons have not yet been created by the Wayne schools. I wish what I'm about to tell you wasn't true, but it is. Do you know that according to the National Center for Victims of Crime, one in five girls, one in five girls, and one in 20 boys are the victims of sexual abuse? And those are just the ones we know about because those children were brave enough to come forward. And I'd like to tell you as a teacher and as a former Girl Scout leader or retired teacher, I'd like to tell you it doesn't exist. But it does. Did you also know that these comprehensive standards that are being proposed by the New Jersey Department of Education can actually help prevent child abuse? That is one of the goals of these standards, to protect children from being abused. Excuse me, I always had a rule in my classroom. We all respect speaker power. The rest of us are listening. Thank you. If my children could do that, certainly we adults can do better. In the past few years...
Excuse me, Mrs. Daff. Just a moment, please. She's totally correct.
What are we teaching our children if we can't respect each other when we speak? What are we teaching them?
Thank you. We'll proceed.
Thank you. In the past few years, Catholic clerics, evangelical clerics, even Boy Scout leaders have been involved in abusing children. Again, I'd like to tell you it's not true, but I know it is. I'm going to leave some documents with you about this because I feel like as an adult, as a retired teacher, as somebody who was a Girl Scout leader, it's the job of us adults to protect the children. That's our job, to protect the children. As the parent of two successful Wayne School grads, as a retired teacher, as a former Girl Scout leader, I happily dedicated decades of my life to the children of the town. I called them my young musicians in my classroom. And as I said, I'd like to tell you that this doesn't happen, but it does. And it's our responsibility to do everything in our power to give the students the tools that can help ensure that they do not become victims, and that if they are victimized, that they have the courage to step forward and let the trusted adults that they know help them get the assistance they need when this happens. So on behalf of my former students and all the children of Wayne, I ask you to please consider this. I ask you to please push beyond your anger and your fear and think about this for the sake of our children. Thank you.
Ryan Badischill, 63 Camaro Drive. I just want to point out that about eight months ago, Dr. Tobek made a promise to us at that time that we would be fully in... Sorry. Too low. Better? So about eight months ago, Dr. Tobek made a promise to us that we would be fully involved in the curriculum that would be developed over that period of time. I came back five times to get confirmation of that at the board meetings, and he confirmed each time that we would be fully involved in the development of the curriculum and the approval of the curriculum, and ensuring, considering how sensitive this is to everybody on all sides, that this would be something that we would be involved with. He spoke specifically about ensuring that parents and teachers would sit down at the individual schools and discuss the curriculum to ensure that everybody was on board with where it is. We would talk about opt-in and opt-out abilities, to be able to choose how those things were working. In today's day and age, we could even talk about virtual instruction for these things so that the parents would be able to be there and answer questions. None of that has occurred now. The latest things that have come out is that we will get an online survey and sometime in August to be able to respond to. And as the gentleman beforehand said, no chance to be able to update the curriculum that we agree with. But there's an opt-out form that's attached to it, which will go out, which none of the parents who are away on vacation over the summer and won't get an opportunity to be able to go through and see these things can't be communicated through the schools now because all of the schools are going to be closed and away for the summer. So we have left ourselves with no opportunity to be able to go back and engage the community properly on this topic, this very sensitive and deeply felt topic to all parents. I therefore ask that you make sure that this gets delayed until that has occurred throughout the school system and that we have a proper set of information available that has been properly discussed with the community and is available to be able to be put back to a proper set of information in the way that we can actually teach our kids the way that we see fit as parents.
Cindy Simon, Wayne. First, it's my understanding that in coming to the fall, that students in high school taking enriched classes will get some kind of weight on their GPA. If that's true, that's great. Reward people for their extra efforts. I'm going to read the part of the standards that weren't read, which is the second grade standards. Core idea: Every individual has unique skills and qualities, which can include the activities they enjoy, such as how they may dress, their mannerisms, and things they like to do. Performance expectations, 2.1.2 SSH.1. Discuss how individuals make their own choices about how they express themselves. 2.1.2 SSH.2. Discuss the range of ways people express their gender and how gender stereotypes may limit behavior. In other words, what Harry and Ms. Wetnick have been objecting to our children learning is that they can be themselves. That they don't have to like dolls and dancing because they're girls and not like them because they're boys. They don't have to like trucks and martial arts because they're boys, and they don't have to like them, and they shouldn't like them because they're girls. We're nuts. This standard doesn't require anything other than teaching that people can be who they are. They don't have to conform to the rigid gender or sex. We called them sex stereotypes when I was growing up, and we recalled the requirement that people conformed to them sexism. That's all this standard is saying by the end of second grade. The second core idea: Families shape the way we think about our bodies, our health, and our behavior. Performance expectations, 2.1.2 SSH.3. Describe different kinds of families locally, nationally, and globally, and note similarities in the ways in which they keep their children safe. 2.1.2 SSH.4. Determine the factors that contribute to a healthy relationship within a family. Again, what's being objected to here is Sue may live with mommy and daddy, Sarah may live with only one parent, Adam may live with his extended family, and Tommy has two mommies. All these parents love their kids and want the best for their children. Let me be clear. I absolutely respect the right of any parent to opt their children out of any of the single lessons that this school district said would be taught either in second, fifth, or eighth grade on the topics that are covered. What I have an issue with, and where I stand firm, is the right of all children in our schools to be free to express who they are, to be welcomed to our schools, whether they come from traditional families or any of the other forms family units take these days, and to be free from being bullied for being who they are and who their families are. The right to be an individual who are welcome and safe from bullying only happens if we acknowledge the differences and teach respect. Our schools have signs that say, "No place for hate."
Ms. Simon?
Is my tone up?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Nicholas Stellianess, 576 Valley Road. What I'm going to say is short, simple, and sweet. What I've grown up to know and what common sense really says: School is meant for math, reading, writing, and social studies and science, not for sex and sexual orientation. That is simple. God gave me my parents so they can teach me that on their basis. He did not make you guys or my teachers my parents because it's left for my mother and my father to teach me what I need to know at the kitchen table. That's how it's supposed to be. Not in a classroom, not for second graders, fifth graders, or eighth graders. It's meant for my parents to teach me. I do not need to know about sex or sexual orientation in eighth grade. And in elementary school, when I grew up, I didn't know what gay or straight was. That's not a topic you talk about who's got what toy or what you're doing. That's what elementary school's about, not that. And I don't see why some person or a group of people in Trenton need to tell me what I'm learning. I don't get that. And I honestly don't have a problem with the board, but I am asking the board, "Don't allow this to happen. Stand up," because I'm taught in school for everything to happen. Even in our country, for us to gain our freedom, there needs to be a rebel. There needs to be someone to say no, and that's what we're asking you to do. It's not homophobic. It's not against expressing yourselves. People express themselves freely at my school. They do it every day, and there's no problem with that. It's about teaching it. It's like the gentleman said earlier, there shouldn't be an opt-out. There should be an opt-in. That's what it's all about. Thank you and have a wonderful night.
Mark Faber, Overlook Avenue. So I come up here every time and I'm just so flustered. So let's address some of the things that were said. If the curriculum was actually about teaching kids about gender stereotypes and that they don't have to, you know, commit to those, that would be wonderful. The problem is, the agenda is not to teach kids that if a boy plays with a doll, that that's okay. It's that if a boy plays with a doll, he may be a girl. That's the problem, is that it's not about just telling people to be people. It's like, well, if you're doing this and this doesn't, you know, fit, well, then maybe you're something else. That's where the problem is. If everybody should just be who they are, nobody should be bullied, that's great. But this is not what's being taught. So let's talk about where we're headed with this gender ideology and everything like that. So now, I follow this, I study this, and I've seen now that there are people online that actually identify as animals. They're trans species. There are people now that are identifying as transracial. So how far do we take this? Where do we stop and where do we say, okay, there's some things that we're going to have to teach in school. There are some things that people are going to have to learn on their own. They're going to have to be taught in their families. Are we prepared to start telling people that it's okay if your kid comes to school as a wolf? Because if you look up wolf woman and horse girl and all these other people that are out there, that's where we are. They're pushing the boundaries. People are now using nouns to be their pronouns. A woman identifies as beast self, fairy self. One guy is demon self. Another one is princess self. And we're taught that if you don't use somebody's expected pronouns, you are transphobic, or you are racist, or you're whatever you are. And that is not acceptable either because they are not confining themselves to a limit. You have to guess what anybody's pronouns could be. So this is the slippery slope that we've headed down, and these are the floodgates that we're opening by going down this road. So when we start talking about transracial, I know that people don't accept that. People just, some people think that they're black or they're Korean. I've watched these people, and they genuinely believe this. Are we ready for that? We better prepare. Addressing the other thing. The woman who said that she's speaking for her kids because she was a teacher, they are not her kids. My kids are my kids. I don't need somebody who believes what they believe to stand up here and say, "I am speaking on behalf of every child from Wayne." That's why all of these people are here. They're here to speak on behalf of their children. They do not have the right to say it. And that's where people have lost their way. What I think is right for my kid may not be what you think is right. Now, I know that I get these emails from Dr. Tobek all the time that come out every week. Why can't we send out an email and ask the questions proactively to parents, how they feel about the curriculum? And then, based upon that, make the decision whether it's going to be an opt-in or opt-out. If the majority of people are okay, you say you choose to opt out. If the majority of people are against it, then it's up to the people, the minority of people, to opt in. Whichever way it goes by the parents, that's the way it should be handled. It shouldn't just be, if there's going to be five people in a class, that it should be an opt-out. We could base it on that. Is that the end of my time?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jennifer Layton, 48 Terrace Road. First, before I want to speak to the new learning standards, I did want to mention that in hearing that there is going to be a retreat for the board with the proposed, you know, enlargement of our student population from the building in town. I would love to say, as not only a teacher but a resident of Wayne, that keeping in mind having smaller class sizes would definitely be beneficial for our students. I don't think that putting a classroom aide in a class ever helps. And I've taught classes of 27 to 32. Another body in the room isn't necessarily a way for me to give more attention to my students. So although I know everybody is afraid to put up these referendums because it's more money for the taxpayers, I feel like it makes our schools better when we can give more individualized attention to our students. So if class numbers stay down, that's a great thing. So that's that. And then, with regard to the student learning standards, I actually write curriculum myself. So I was thinking about, you know, when I do this over the summer and we create units and lessons that go within them, it's not just those specific lessons. So we're talking about these like opt-in, opt-out things. And it's neither here nor there what my opinion is about the standards. But my question really has to go to the opt-in or opt-out that we're talking about. So we might be able to opt in or out of these specific lessons that we're talking to. But if we adopt the standards within our curriculum, that means that any teacher can pull from these standards in interdisciplinary connections. So my question to you is, is that if we're saying, okay, parents can opt in or out of this, then does that mean that we're also having a discussion with the staff and saying, because of this, only health and PE can access these standards? Because if that's not the case, then it's not truly an opt-in or opt-out if interdisciplinary connections can be made. So if the board can just speak to that, I think it would help everybody really understand, you know, what this is about. Are we opting into these lessons? Or is this going to be something that teachers can access and it can be part of any curriculum within any subject area? Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
We haven't been to a meeting. Excuse me, sir. Carry on. Yes, I know. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I am Norman Robertson. I'm a Wayne resident. I congratulate you for sitting through all these meetings, that's for sure. I'm here to talk about one of the specifics that I've seen. Gender dysphoria is a real thing. Gender dysphoria, when someone feels trapped in a body that they can't identify with, it is a very difficult path to navigate. It is important for us to understand when we're doing curriculum that what precedes gender dysphoria very frequently is gender confusion. And yet, we are encouraged by the State Department of Education, one of the resources that sent out had a unit on gender for first graders, for first graders. And the teaching manual for that, here's what, basically what it said that teachers should be doing. Put up a sign that says, that uses the word gender on it. Then explain when we refer to a boy baby or a girl baby, we're talking about what gender the baby is. Okay? And then ask, how do you know what gender you are? The teacher should ask the student. If the student says something like, I just know it, or I feel that way in the inside, then put up a sign that says gender identity. And by the way, these are, what, six-year-olds? And then say, gender identity is that feeling of knowing your gender. You might feel like you are a boy, you might feel like you are a girl. You might feel like you're a boy, even if you have body parts that some people might tell you are girl parts. You might feel that you're a girl even though you have some body parts that some people might tell you are boy parts. And you might not feel like you're a boy or a girl, but you're a little bit of both. No matter how you feel, it's perfectly normal. You can't sit there and tell me that a child who's six years old won't be confused by a unit that looks like that. They're going to be confused. We don't want that to morph into something more serious. We don't want that to, for the more serious gender dysphoria to morph into something that's even more serious. We have to understand where this came from. Judith Butler, who was, wrote a seminal work on this in 1990. She indicated that gender is performative, and that's what this is talking about. And she also said that both, it is both a sexual theory and it's an application, in its application, it's political. So we are seeing something that is politically ideological here. And there's one good way of dealing with that, and that is to keep politics out of our classroom.
Thanks.
Tori Esposito, Woodlot Road. Teachers abuse children too. I just wanted to get that out there with the priests and everybody else, so. Mr. Fratell, Mr. Pavlak, I can respect that you can abstain from the vote until you see specifics. I just ask you to not let the community know what those specifics are on August 15th, three weeks from school start. We were told at the last board meeting, it's one period, three total lessons out of the entire school year. So I ask you, what's the value of having it if it's only one period and three lessons? Are we just checking a box? How are we teaching biology? Have those standards changed, or does an egg still have to wait for sperm to fertilize it? That's the sex ed I remember. We're also told, let's leave it to the professionals of education, the same professionals who think Gender Queer is an appropriate book for teenagers, and when Kayla Wiskow is appropriate for an elementary library. You cannot pick your gender, you cannot pick your race, only women can have babies and only men have a chance of developing testicular cancer. If any of the above rings is hateful to you, you're going to have an incredibly tough life when reality catches up to you. Why do I need to opt out? Why can't parents opt in? See what list is bigger? No one, especially elected officials, should be telling a parent when an appropriate time is to introduce these materials. It's our right as parents to protect our children from what we deem as harmful, regardless of what society finds acceptable. Each family has different experiences, values, and religion. No one is telling anyone how to live their life. Keep it out of the schools. If standing up for our children burns bridges with people, well, I got the matches. See you in two weeks.
My name's Stella Furinelli, Jessica Way, Wayne, New Jersey. I am not here to talk about the topics right now, but I do have to say something. I'm sitting back there and I'm listening to everyone, and you guys are asking us to be respectful, but I could see it from some of the board members, I'm not going to call anybody out because everyone knows who I'm talking about, that we don't get the same respect when we're up here talking. Very condescending. Thank you.
You broke it, you buy it.
I'd have to tiptoes. Pam Masick. I have a couple of questions, based on the previous Board of Ed meeting. Ms. Kazan had asked a question, can the board reject it? This was after Mr. Prasakos tried presenting the motion. Can the board reject it outright without violating the law? So my question is, please tell us what law would be broken. There's a difference between a law and a mandate. Number two, Mr. Toback said the repercussions would be an issue. Please tell us what that issue would be. Next, it's my understanding that Mr. Geppert is counsel for not only Wayne but Garwood as well. How can there be such different outcomes from the two Board of Eds? So I'm genuinely wondering, is Garwood rejecting Mr. Geppert's legal counsel on this matter? And, you know, there just seems to be a lot of confusion. I want to understand. He's attorney for both Board of Eds. Ms. Kazan also said, let professionals do their job. I'd like to know who they are. And Ms. Kazan also said, it's not pornography. Obviously, we all have a different concept of what pornography is. Some people, you know, we have different belief systems that dictate what's appropriate sexual preferences or choices. Some people are into fetishes, some people do different things. I would like your definition of what pornography is. So should any, so when we vote, when you vote and determinations are made, I want to know your point of reference, what you think is acceptable since you opened it up stating you don't think the curriculum is pornography. Thank you.
Good evening. This is my first time here, and I find it very exciting. I'm Eileen Dunlan, Valley Road, Wayne. I have no children, but I live in this community, so your children are my children, right? I don't mean to be, to sound like I'm a preacher, but the identity of these children, our children are rooted in Christ, and they have God-given destiny. Please don't break our children and let them grow into fractured adults, right? And there are ways where we can help young children to see the signs, the patterns, and the behaviors of people who are sexual abusers. They can defend themselves without having to learn this graphic content. Thank you.
During the last Board of Education meeting, as I watched on TV from home, I noticed that none of the BOE administration or trustees mentioned the specifics of the new NJSLS-CHPE. There are new learning requirements mandated for the second, fifth, and eighth grades, and I believe that a lot of the confusion is stemming from the fact that our board has never mentioned out loud what the actual learning standards are, so that the families at home don't actually know what's going on. And I'm not talking about the second grade learning standards that teach us to be kind to one another regardless of what kind of a family we're from. If it's mother and mother, or father and father, or mother and, single mother and grandmother, or heterosexual couple, we're not talking about teaching children to be kind and inclusive. What I would like to state publicly, and how embarrassed I am that I have to do this in front of my friend Nick, is the learning standard for the eighth grade, which requires teaching 14-year-old children oral and anal sex. Teaching 14-year-old children about oral and anal sex is not educational. And as Ms. Kazan told us at the last meeting, these learning standards were written by experts. They were not. I have been researching it since 2020. These new standards were written by activists that all have ulterior motives. Let me say that part again, by activists that all have ulterior motives. Ask any expert, any true expert, without an agenda, and the teaching of those two topics is inappropriate and certainly not educational. As I stand here tonight and repeat the words, oral and anal sex, I am concerned about having to say these words in front of the youngster here in the front row and for any children listening at home. If you as board trustees didn't utter those terms at any of the past BOE meetings, and I as a mother have to be concerned about what children in ear shock can hear me saying, oral and anal sex, how are you expecting our beautiful Wayne teachers to teach it? And to have 14-year-old children to be mandated to learn it? It was not mandated by experts, as the trustees stated at the last meeting. It was written by and lobbied for by activists, and our governor signed it into law. We all know that you took an oath to uphold the law. We know that you took an oath to uphold the New Jersey law, but this is in no way educational. And at what point do you as good people say, in June of 2022, when we've been mandated by our governor to teach anal sex to eighth graders, when do we stand up and become protectors and say we're not doing it? And saying, as the daughters and sons of Wayne, New Jersey...
That's your time, ma'am.
That we're not teaching it.
That's your time.
Please vote it down, please. Not the second grade standards, the eighth grade anal sex standards.
Thank you.
Hi. Janine, I'm from Wayne. I have one question. You see how these parents keep coming here every two weeks and telling you how they don't want these standards taught to their kids. Are you listening? Because even last week or two weeks ago, it was, well, we still got to see what's going to come of it, and let's see this, and let's see that. We don't want it. Nobody wants it. And nobody is homophobic, as everybody says, because we don't want to be taught certain things in the school. Second grade gender identity, they're too young for that. They don't need to know that. What's the point? And then, fifth grade masturbation, they don't need to know that. Please listen to this community. They don't want it. There may be a few people that do want it, but the majority don't. And you see, we come here every two weeks, and then we pack the room. As soon as something's coming up, we tell everybody, show up, because obviously, Ms. Kazan always says, nobody shows up, so everybody's okay with it. Clearly, they're not. People have families, they can't be here all the time. That's why they don't show up.
Show up to vote.
Yeah, show up to vote. But, I mean, honestly, can we do something and stop the madness? Because nobody wants it. Do an opt in, send out some other kind of a form, take a survey. Like they said, take a survey. And like the other lady said, respect us too when we're talking, because the eye rolls and the playing around, not cool.
Nicholas Stellianessis. Hang on, I'll wait for... Nicholas Stellianessis, 576 Valley Road. I'd like to just quote and re-utter something I said in last year, July 2021, at a meeting. And I just feel this tonight and all the meetings since, us students are talked like we are pawns. They have this. Are we going to give them this curriculum? How about you hear from us? Because you could, if you, the teachers claim they know who we are, they know, they don't. They don't know who we are behind a classroom, behind what we say in class. They don't know who we are. If you, I could probably pick out, I could count on one hand the number of kids who would agree with any of the things that are said to be done tonight. The kids simply do not agree with it. And then I say, why don't you come to the meetings and speak like I do? Their simple answer is, well, I'm afraid that I will be chastised by teachers, by my own parents, because we're being taught to be afraid of our First Amendment, not to embrace it. I am all for gay rights. I am all for it. I'm all for gay marriage. But how do you think the rights came to be? Freedom of speech. But now, the same people that want to teach it, which, they also want to teach against the freedom of speech that gave people gay rights, which is a good thing, but you want to teach against freedom of speech, which we're taught to be afraid, afraid of speaking out. I'm not, clearly, but, because I'm saying what I believe, and I'm speaking not behalf of me, not behalf of a handful of kids, but a lot of kids out there. Because when we have these lessons of, I don't even know what they're called, they have us say, well, what you don't joke about, what you do joke about. No one jokes about people. But these kids, they hear these things and they're like, no one ever says these things. Where do they get this? Why don't they solve real problems that happen in our school? Like kids with autism getting bullied every single day. I see it, and it's never addressed. But then someone makes, says, oh, that's gay, which, that's stupid. It's a stupid joke. But then those kids get in so much trouble because they made a dumb joke, but, which could be offensive, but it's still dumb. But we're not going to get kids in trouble that are bullying kids with autism, calling them nicknames and all sorts of things. That's wrong. We need to teach people, like we have the No Place For Hate Club. The No Place For Hate Club strictly focuses on, their logo literally has the Black Lives Matter symbol, the gay pride flag. Why shouldn't it be No Place For Hate for anything, like it was when I was in fifth When I was in fifth grade, the words No Place For Hate meant no bullying in general. Never was there mention of Black Lives Matter, never was there mention of this, because by grouping this and saying, this community, the African-American community, the white community, this, the LGBTQ community, this generation is being taught to be divided into groups and sectors. We... Is my time?
I'm sorry, Nick. That's your time.
Thank you.
Quick question first. Is it three minutes? Is it five minutes? Didn't you take a vote on that?
It's three minutes. Next, the next public meeting, it will be...
Oh, so it didn't count for this meeting?
Three minutes during agenda items, and then five minutes during public.
So it didn't count for this meeting?
No. It's three minutes. Well, but you get a third, a second bite at the apple, sir, so you're in another three minutes.
And is there going to be a big reveal after, after we speak?
A big reveal.
Well, I don't know. Sean said something about, we're going to be very happy, we have something that we're going to announce, but I got to go, you know? So, oh, no, when we're done, the meeting's done.
Well, we will have comments from administration.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I know, and all you guys.
Okay. Let's proceed, please.
All right, thank you. Norman Robertson, back again. I want to share something with you from my own experience. When I was done in the Senate, the governor asked me to serve on the state parole board. And I wasn't sure at first, but I ultimately did. And I served there for 14 and a half years. None of the, and nobody in this room, including law enforcement, probably, had the conversations that I had for those 14 and a half years with people who were incarcerated. And one of the things that I saw tonight for the folks who, for Pride Month or whatever, are going to have, is that they're collecting books for the incarcerated. I have two boxes of books that I've already sent... When I was done in the Senate, the governor asked me to serve on the State Parole Board. And I wasn't sure at first, but I ultimately did. And I served there for 14 and a half years. None of the, and nobody in this room, including law enforcement, probably, had the conversations that I had for those 14 and a half years with people who were incarcerated. And one of the things that I saw tonight for the folks who, for Pride Month or whatever, are going to have, is that they're collecting books for the incarcerated. I have two boxes of books that I've already set aside just for that purpose. So let me tell you some of the things that I saw. The bit, I learned many things, but one of the things I learned is that when children are exposed to matters sexual before they can actually process them, the results can be devastating. It can be devastating. That's one of the reasons I talked about the possibility of gender confusion. I had an inmate once. I've seen hundreds of cases of child abuse. When I was, by the time I was done, my colleagues asked them to figure out how many of those conversations I had, and the number was 20,599. I had one fella who had to deal with hormone issues. He had a precocious puberty. He was shaving every day by the age of 12. He didn't get the help that he needed. He didn't get the help he needed. He wound up raping a girl at 14. And then I saw him for something different. And I said, didn't you, because he was sent to a juvenile facility. I said, didn't you learn anything from your experience? And he thought about it, and he said, well, yeah, I did. I said, what's that? He said, not to leave a witness. Okay? Let's talk about pronouns. One of the toughest, not toughest, but one of the most emotional hearings I ever had was from a guy, he was a tough guy, too. He was a tough guy, in and out of prison. He was about 47 by the time I saw him. He reminded me of Joe Frazier, because he had a tough-looking face. Joe Frazier used to put his face in brine so it wouldn't cut so easily. And I asked him a normal question, which is, if you get a parole, why would it be any different than your life has been so far? And he was all enthusiastic. He had had a grandfather who raised him, who said, you're not, you're not any good at all. You're never going to go nowhere. And you know what it was that said, changed his life? And we wound up paroling him, because he was so enthusiastic. He said, because I learned to read. But by all means, let's not talk about reading. By all means, let's talk about pronouns. And by all means, unfortunately, three minutes if you'd like, or I can ask everybody else if you'd like to hear another story.
Mr. Robertson, I'm sorry, that's your turn.
But you don't, so I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Joan Pomerano, 741 Alps Road. I graduated from Wayne Senior High School back in 1961. And what I want to say is, I grew up naive. I knew nothing. I didn't know about...
Excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting you. Would the people in the audience stop speaking? She's difficult to hear. I'm going to ask you to lower the microphone a little bit.
Yes, please, yeah, thank you.
And please proceed, thank you.
Is that better? Okay.
Yes.
As I said, I graduated from Wayne Senior High School, that's what it was when I was there, in 1961. And in that time, I grew up in the 50s and so forth, we were naive. We didn't know anything. We weren't taught anything. And our parents were brought up in a time not too far from the Victorian era, where you didn't talk about those things. I didn't learn that there were homosexual people till I was in my 20s. As a child, I wouldn't have known that maybe, you know, there were predators, that there were people out there who might hurt me. And in fact, I was actually molested by a neighbor when I was about nine years old. Okay? What I'm saying is, we need some type of education. I will admit, I haven't read all those things, I didn't have a chance, but my point is, there has to be an awareness of what is out there for the kids. I was a teacher for 31 years in Patterson, okay? I know how you can scale down something to a point where you, you make it understandable to a child. You don't have to use words, you can get the idea across, or at least the awareness across in some way. So all I'm saying is, I don't want kids today to grow up as naive as I was. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Freeswick?
Yes.
I'm sorry, there's a young lady in the back who hasn't had an opportunity to speak. Could she come forward?
Well, I haven't had an opportunity to speak either in this session.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeswick. My mistake, my mistake. I apologize.
Apology accepted. Jim Freeswick, 1212 Summer Hill Road. On May 24th, there was another mass school shooting. This one took place in Uvalde, Texas, at Robb Elementary School. A madman with a AR-15 semi-automatic rifle, 18-years-old, slaughtered 19 fourth graders and two fourth-grade teachers. We need federal gun control from the United States Congress. And until we get it, local boards of ed are going to have to take certain actions to try to protect our schoolchildren from mass shooters. My question is, given all of the mass school shootings, the most recent being in Uvalde, Texas, what is the Wayne public school system doing, if anything, to improve school safety? Is it going to station a police officer in every school during the entire school day? Or not? And if not, what steps are going to be taken? If any, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I lost my place.
It's okay.
Hi, Maureen Tousas, El Mary Place, Wayne, New Jersey. I know a couple people have asked, you know, why haven't, why hasn't the board released the changes? Just for the record, the changes and the curriculum guidelines are on the website for newjersey.gov, and it's 66 pages long, and it's there for you to read. The performance expectation for eighth grade clearly says, define vaginal, oral, and anal sex. It does not say teach, it says define. And the reason why I say that is because the definition of something literally means a statement of the exact meaning of a word, especially in a dictionary, or the degree of distinctness in an outline of an object. Teach, the definition for teach is show or explain. As an adult, I realize that in the eighth grade, the health teacher is not going to show or explain to my child next year how to have anal sex, because I have given this some thought. I am grateful, however, that they are going to teach her that anal sex is indeed sex, because we all remember Bill Clinton, I did not have sex with that woman. They are going to tell her, which I already have, that there are three types of sex, and that she has the right as her person with her body to consent to that. And final note, if I hear one more time about opt-in or opt-out, it's the same thing, because you know what? My kid is going if I have to opt-in, and she will still share with everybody who asks her what happened that day.
I'm sorry, Mr. Faber, we will proceed when...
All right, guys, come on, let me finish. I just got something quick to add. Let me finish this up.
Thank you.
So, again, this is, it actually goes in line. We're talking about respect, right? And inclusivity, and, you know, all of those wonderful things. Now, the thing I wanted to talk about was, as I was walking in, and the girls that spoke about the pride celebration on Sunday. Now, I read an article written by a senior, you know, I think you wrote it, it was about a senior from one of the high schools, said that they particularly chose Father's Day for this celebration. And there's also another article that I read, where they're trying to change Father's Day to become Special Persons Day. Now, fathers have a day a year, where you get a special day, where your children or your family, you know, just, it's a nice thing, just like Mother's Day. Now, that's where, I think, again, we're losing respect for the people that are not part of a certain group. Now, if you are not a father, that day is not for you. But there's a whole month to celebrate everybody else. So why is it that we can't respect the things that are for certain people without tearing them down? Why do I have to feel like now they're trying to specifically target Father's Day? A day where it's to celebrate me, and that's a wonderful day for me, but now they're going to, you know, it's, you're te, and that's, is that the type of inclusivity that we're teaching to our kids in high school? Because this was a high school girl that runs the Wayne for Change that said this was a, it was a specific choice to choose that day. So it doesn't seem like we're teaching kids to be inclusive of all. It's being inclusive of all that believe the way you do. And that is not inclusivity. You want my respect? You want me to respect what you are, what you believe, how you feel, how you live? Please, do the same for me. Don't try to take away my day, because you have an entire month for yours. And that's all I wanted to say.
I guess I'm starting and finishing. Wait, hold on. There we go. Truthfully, I didn't even know why I came, I came up here, just was hearing a lot of comments, and I just felt compelled.
Name, please.
Oh, sorry, Alan A. Sartway. I don't think, and again, I respect everything everybody said, but I don't, I don't think this has to do with being naive. When I grew up, I grew up here, went to college, did everything, and I had gay friends, I had black friends, Asian friends, all kinds of friends, and nobody gave it a second thought. But it's like, we want to start teaching these kids in school to give it a second thought and be divided. Like the young man says, he doesn't think about it, he just has his friends in school, and the wrong kids are getting bullied. You're right. You're right. And like I said before about the math program, we're not concentrating on kids learning math. They don't know it. I see it. And reading? Well, apparently, my daughter didn't meet the benchmark, whatever that means. So I have no qualms with awareness, and teaching kids in school that it exists, and that's But vaginal, anal, and oral sex? No. Masturbation? No. The age of consent for my daughter is 18. Until she's 18, her consent comes from me and her mother. So she should not be taught this in school, that it's okay at 13 and 14 to engage in that kind of behavior and activity. It's dangerous. I think a gentleman said, we're going down a slippery slope here. Don't do it. We're all here saying, please, don't do it. Thank you.
I hope I didn't break it. Hi, good evening. My name is Holly. I live on Evelyn Terrace in Wayne. I was a career teacher for 34 years, teaching first through third grade, and I had children, both gay and straight, in my classes. Yes, as both gay and straight as you can be as a first, second, or third grader. So all of my children, though, needed support and love. And yes, I do say my, because teachers not only take your children, and not only...
Excuse me.
...take your children...
Please, up here.
...to teach, but yes, we also end up being nurses and all sorts of, I don't know how many children called me mom through the years. But all of our children need support and love, wherever they are. They need to see healthy examples of people like them in books and other media in the classrooms. I want to personally thank you for your dedication to our kids, and especially to those of you tonight who have pride flags in front of you. I see that there are four of you. Our students, all of them, need to see that. These young people that were up here, I didn't know any of them, but they were talking about, they noticed who had pride flags. You all should have had them up there, frankly. Our students, excuse me, I didn't talk when you were, our students don't need your approval...
Could you just hold up for a moment?
Sure.
I'll wait.
She's addressing the audience. When she's talking, she's addressing these people. So I don't understand why you're always telling this side to stop. I don't get it.
It's civility. She has the floor.
She's not addressing the audience.
Excuse me.
Madam President.
Excuse me.
Madam President, we have the right...
I'm sorry.
...as a board to control the meeting. If we are unable to, then the possibility of taking a recess is available to the board. I'd just like to remind the public again, we sit here for a period of time to hear whoever wants to come to us, and we're continuing to do that tonight. It's very hard for us to hear when there's a lot of noise that's made and when it becomes disruptive. So we're just asking people to show the same courtesy to the other speakers that they receive when they come up to speak.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our students don't need your approval, but they would appreciate your support. And I also assure you that they're not, sir, they're not going to be taking Father's Day away. Thank you all.
Hi, Ryan Matashell again. First of all, I want to say, I think the lady who came up and spoke about what she's teaching her kids and what's right for her kids, I think that's fantastic. That's exactly what everybody is asking for, without somebody then telling them that their daughter should tell everybody else what they have experienced during that time. I think we all deserve the right to be able to go out and tell our kids what sorts of sex, how many sorts of sex, where they can put it, where they can't put it. That's a right of a parent, and I think that's great. But I do also want to say at the same time, you know, unfortunately, my wife is not able to come. She really wanted to today. And she, you know, she said a year ago that this is where it would lead to, right? She said that we would get to this point, and it would be the kinds of things that we are having to discuss in public, which is uncomfortable for everybody to discuss in public. It's going to continue further than this if we don't stop it now. We have to find a way to put some kind of restrictions around these things before it goes further. Every time you open the news, there's something a little bit further down the line. There's drag queens now that are coming in for storytime, not because they're drag, not because they're a person that is a drag queen, but because they are drag queens to come in and tell a story, right? Those kind of things now are trying to be normalized to push forward and to make it something that we all now just go through and accept, not because we're being equal as people, not because there is a need for any of this stuff, but just because they are a special person, and so we want one in every single school. If this continues, there is going to be no boundary on this stuff at all. It will be sex for pleasure throughout school. There was actually a study done before sex education came in, when we all thought that sex was rape and so on, was a big problem within schools. It increased after sex education came in. It got larger, it got more of a problem. And that's going to continue the further down here we go. We have to find a way to put an end to all of this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wendy, and I live in Wayne. I brought tonight a copy of something out of the NJEA conference that was held on June 3rd and 4th, 2022. Workshop descriptions, LGBTQIA+ and overview. This is what they're teaching. This is what they're teaching. This is what they're emphasizing teachers to teach in the classroom. So for anybody who doesn't think that this is really going on, this is directly from their handbook. Understanding sexual orientation and gender identity is key. It doesn't stop there. Is key to reaching nonconforming students. I would like to know what nonconforming students look like. What does that mean? What does it mean to nonconform? That's a scary term. It sounds, it it's terrible. Point number 10, we're gonna skip all these other things, but point number 10, LGBTQIA+ Curriculum Inclusions. In this session, you will learn ways to infuse LGBTQIA+ content into your lesson. The terminology infuse means to fill, means to saturate, means to complete. If you are not alarmed by that word, infuse and nonconformity, I think we all should be. Everybody understands that people are different. If you grew up and you went to school in 1961, yes, you didn't learn about those things. Children of today are not responsible for that. Parents have an obligation, a God-given duty, when you are a parent. You defend and stand up for what you think is right for your children. Nobody gets to tell you what's right and what's wrong. Since when did that change? Since when did people have to fight and say, that's not right, and for people not to be heard and to be considered seriously? Children are are our most valuable asset in this country. They are the future. The confusion, the unnecessary distortion. Where's the kindness? Where's be kind? Where's that? And where does it stop? It's a Pandora's Box, a dangerous slope. Thank you for your time.
Hello and good evening. My name is Adam, and I'm a resident of Pumpkin Road. And for the past three years of my life, I've worked as a suicide prevention counselor for one of the national suicide prevention hotlines. Each shift, I had so many LGBTQ+ and allied youth reach out, who were hurting, in pain, upset, and angry, from not being accepted in their homes to not being accepted in their schools. Rarely, I had youth reach out who were happy in their classrooms. When that happened, it's because the youth shared that their teachers in school included people like them, whether in their curricula or extracurriculars. It's because they felt safe and welcomed, even by the smallest actions, like a teacher calling them by their preferred name or having a small pride flag on the desk. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in all youth. Queer youth are four times more likely to commit suicide than their straight peers. 1.8 million LGBTQ+ youth consider suicide every year, and at least one attempts suicide every 45 seconds. Learning about differences, variation in identity matters. Having fact- and reality-based education in the classroom is so important and meaningful for a person's well-being and development. Making sure children are not only included but well-informed should always be the priority. Members of the Board of Ed, approve and pass New Jersey's learning standards. Thank you.
Didn't intend to be, sorry about this, Diane Tath at 36 Lake Charles East, but since I was addressed by somebody, and I do want to respond to the one woman who said children are our most valuable resource, 100% Up here. 100% agree with that. And as teachers, something you should know is that we do call our the children in our classroom our kids. I remember my children being confused by that when they were little. I'd had to explain, well, when the kids are in my classroom, they're like my kids because I'm responsible for them. Their parents sent them to me, and when they're with me, I'm going to take care of them. So every time there is a code red in the building, I did this many, I can't tell you how many times as a teacher I did this, and teachers all over the country in every classroom do this, they contemplate what they would do to protect their kids, because those kids in their classroom, guess what? They are my kids. And in the event that that code red turns out not to be a drill, I can't tell you how many times I contemplated that as a teacher. The number one cause of death for children ages 1 to 19 is gun violence. Right now, we have kids going to school saying, am I safe? Their amygdala, the part of the brain that deals with fight or flight, they're asking themselves, am I safe? So maybe instead of focusing on the things we're talking about now, we've got kids going to school, and we're asking them to learn, but they can't because their brain won't let them, because their amygdala, the part of the brain that deals with the fight or flight response, is focused on, am I safe? That makes it really hard for your cognitive abilities to work, for you to learn new information, for you to retain new information, to take that new information and put it in, lop it in with the stuff you already have and use it, to be creative, all the things we're asking of our kids in school. So let's work together, let's focus on a real problem, which is that gun violence is the number one cause of death among children age 1 to 19. And let's do everything we can and institute gun reforms, national gun reforms, so that our kids can be safe. But we need to work together on this, all of us together. So the children in our schools, and yes, when they're in my classroom, they were my kids, so that all our kids are safe. So let's focus on gun violence, and let's focus on making sure our children are safe. Let's do everything in our power, rather than focusing on other things. Let's make sure our kids are safe, in their schools, in the movie theaters, in our churches, in our grocery stores. Let's make sure our children are safe. Thank you.
Sydney Simon-Stowe. I wasn't going to get up and speak again, but I feel that I've got to. Anthony mentioned this idea of dividing people into groups. I'm sorry, Nicholas, my apologies. Nicholas mentioned dividing people into groups, as if it is a new thing. The truth of the matter is, it's not a new thing. The second I entered the Wayne Schools as a child, I was the outsider. I was viciously bullied in a time where that wasn't even considered bullying, and the adults did nothing about it. We are all humans. We should all be being taught to respect each other, each other's beliefs, and to treat each other with decency. The other thing I want to mention, and I want to make sure the board is clear on this concept of nonconformity. To conform to societal norms means to do what society expects you to do. So when I was growing up, that meant wear dresses and skirts, in school, we could wear pants, but wear dresses and skirts to certain kinds of events, like dolls, do girly things. It meant, don't play sports, don't want to be a wrestler, don't flip baseball cards with the boys. There were these expectations. The second-grade standards are simply trying to get people to realize that you don't have to conform to these things. When you're different, either because you can't help but be different, like I am because of a disability, or because you're just different, you like different things, or you dress different ways, or you have different mannerisms than other people, and by the way, that's what a lot of the autistic children are getting made for, fun of, for, is the different mannerisms. That's nonconforming. That's all that term means. It's not something evil and sinister. We need to respect everybody's individual, and it's the board's responsibility to make sure that that's what we're teaching our students.
I just wanted to address something. One of the women that was a teacher said a question, am I safe? And unfortunately, a number of families haven't felt that their children are safe, their values are being undermined, and there isn't exactly an inclusivity, because a lot of families with conservative values are feeling attacked and undermined. And, you know, as we've gone on, and we're hoping you'll consider that they want to be included too. What I'd like to share is, I had said that families in previous, I don't know how many months ago, families are going to pull out of the school system, and they'll homeschool, and I will do what I can to support them. As a home educator, for 20 years with seven kids, a little bit of experience, I want to share a good report. I have networked and and come alongside different families to see and to help them during this tumultuous time. And instead of children being educated and and the focus on sex and gender identity, I saw children learning how to write paragraphs and how to write in script and do addition, subtraction, double-digit multiplication, cursive handwriting, and they memorized the preamble to the Constitution. These were seven-year-olds and six-year-olds. They played outside together, they had normal skirmishes, and reconciled, and were best-of-friends, and came from different backgrounds. They're not thinking about everything that is is trying to be implemented right now. They were excited to learn about photosynthesis and the water cycle, six and seven years old. Let them let them learn about the Constitution and government, let them memorize the preamble. This is what our six and seven-year-olds can do. And as more parents pull their kids out, if they don't feel safe, I will help them memorize the preamble as well. This is what our children need. They need to be educated so that they can have successful futures.
Suni Soy, Black Oak Ridge Road. I cannot believe my ears when I hear all kinds of people saying all kinds of horrible things about America. I'm an immigrant. No one has ever been kinder to me than Americans. No one. I have held down a job. My husband has held down a job for 37 years. We have lived at the same home for 42 years. I've been married for 47 years. My son is a cardiologist. He doesn't just do cardiology, he does heart transplants. I am an immigrant. America is not a mean place. Yeah, it is not. America is not a mean place. Everyone is accepted here. And I want to go on to say that when we're being lectured about how disrespectful we are, we can add other people on the board as well.
Madam Speaker, seeing no one approach besides him, I would make the motion for him to be the last speaker.
Second.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Tom Van Denberg, 698 Trail. Oh, all right.
Raise the mic. Thank you.
Put it up a little bit. All right. I think, does that work?
The
Yeah, okay.
You have to kind of raise the whole arm a little bit.
All right, I'll just hold it.
That's fine.
Sorry, I'm really short. So my name's Tom Van Denberg. I write for Out in Jersey, which is the state's only LGBTQ magazine. I also live in Wayne. And I've heard a lot about this curriculum, so I just wanted to make a few comments. I agree with a lot of people that, you know, gender identity itself should not be taught in second grade. What the curriculum says, though, is not gender identity. It may use that term, but what's really being taught is gender stereotypes, right? What we've been saying, you know, can a boy become a nurse? Can a girl become an astronaut? For the fifth grade, masturbation is discussed. It's discussed as an example. You don't have to teach it. The local Board of Ed of Ed has the power to determine what these things are. So let me turn to eighth grade. Not everyone is straight. Vaginal sex exists. Oral sex exists. Anal sex exists. This curriculum is LGBTQ-inclusive because not everyone is straight. And some straight people engage in other activities. I'm a little bit younger than many of you, no offense, but back in my day, I remember hearing straight people talking about certain of these things, and they had no idea what was going on. They thought that these things wouldn't lead to STIs. We had a very impassioned speech by a lady wearing a beautiful rainbow top, saying, you know, we're teaching kids anal sex and being very impassioned about it. This isn't a Kama Sutra class. Let's be clear, this is not Kama Sutra, okay? This is how to not get an STD. That's all it is. It just so that students are aware, so they don't get STD, and that if anyone is touching them inappropriately, if there's any molestation, they are protected. That's all it is. I want to quickly turn to Father's Day. We've been talking a lot about, some people took offense to that. I have to say that I actually really liked the students who did on Father's Day. My father didn't accept me for being gay. He told me that I was going to hell. When some of the students were talking outside with people out there, they were told similar things by some of the people in the audience. So it goes to show, I think
Shh. I'm sorry.
These things still exist. And so we need to be accepting of people and accept them for who they are, because otherwise, abuse continues in our school system. I wasn't going to show up today, but during the last meeting, Ms. Wentink and Mr. Prasakis voted on a resolution that would force, essentially would have our school break the law and not implement the curriculum. And the the issue that I was hearing from a lot of the LGBTQ students, even here in Wayne, is that they feel stigmatized and discriminated against by that action. Saying that this curriculum, because it's LGBT-inclusive, should not be, you know, should not be included, is harmful to their mental health, they said. So I just want us to all consider how to actually be inclusive, and I would ask these two board members what they're going to do, what measures they can do to be accepting of LGBTQ students. What are some positive things that they can do? Do these board members support LGBTQ equality? And how are they going to do this in a positive way? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Excuse me. Thank you. Old business? Oh, sorry. Administration comments. Thank you.
I'll just say that I'm not as optimistic as Mr. Duffy was. The, I guess the thing to do is maybe we'll run through some of the things that were said that we can answer, all right? And maybe there's some things we can't answer. We'll try to do to our best. First of all, so there was comments about school safety, and so lost, perhaps, in part of the board meeting, Mr. Moffett read into the the record a resolution that allowed the district to move forward with a contract with the police department that will, at some point next year, maybe not the first day of school, but we will, we're in the process of now moving forward with the township to hire police officers for every school. Okay? So it means, okay, so that, so it's a positive, it's a very positive thing that probably should have been mentioned. To one of our, one of the speakers spoke about, like, you know, with Common Core, so we don't have the Common Core, I just wanted to clarify that. Mrs. Prasakos, you asked about the Ed Committee that met last week, a report was delivered last week. Mrs. Layton, you asked about the opt-in and opt-out option and what that means for you as, or what it would mean for teachers. That's something that has to be considered, because obviously, when there is a very specific thing that students are able, by parent approval, to learn about or not learn about, then that would have to carry through across all subject areas, okay? So that's, so we respect everybody's wishes, regardless of the subject. There was another point made about the Garwood Board of Education, the idea, why can't this board do the same thing as Garwood or maybe Wanacoo? I don't really know much about Wanacoo, but I do know about the case with Garwood. I know Mr. Geppert spoke about it, because he's also the attorney for the Garwood Board of Education. He talked about that a few weeks ago, but it makes sense to mention that again. The Garwood Board of Education did not actually end up approving a resolution to not follow the the standards, okay? So that's not what actually occurred. Mr. Geppert, you're the attorney. From my understanding, it was basically the Garwood Board of Ed determining that certain language would not be used. Is that correct?
Yes, the Garwood Board's resolution was very specific, identifying curriculum instead of the standards, and also identifying the terms that have been thrown around this evening as being what they objected to at that point. As I stated at the last meeting, they also still face the process of approving the health curriculum. So this is really an initial step in what could be a long process.
Okay. So, Mr. Geppert, the other question is if a board member, because that was something that was brought up, if a board member decides to vote against following the standards and determines that they, you know, they're using the positions of a board member to vote against the standards, then, I mean, to begin with, you face ethics charges immediately because of the Code of Conduct for board members.
(INAUDIBLE).
You can't? That was pretty loud, okay? So you would face that, but in addition to ethics violations, what are the other consequences potentially for a Board of Education refusing to follow the standards?
Well, the standards are different from the curriculum, as I said. The curriculum the Board has much more discretion over, both with respect to the regulation and other things. With the standards, you run the risk of violating the statute. There's a statute that gives the Commissioner of Education the right to withhold state aid for any action, including the law, but other things as well from the Commissioner. So you run that risk along those lines, and that's something that certainly we've discussed at the board level before.
Okay. So I guess, let's see. Mr. Geppert, can you also tell the public about the opt-in, opt-out issue and specifically what is required, so there's no question about that? There's a specific requirement. I know a lot of people here tonight have mentioned about, why can't it just be opt-in? Why do we have opt-in, opt-out? Isn't it the same thing? I mean, theoretically, it should end up the same way, but there are differences based on what's required.
Yeah, the relevant state statute, 18835-4.7 states, "Any child whose parent or guardian presents to the school principal a signed statement that any part of the instructions in health, family, life, education, or sex education is in conflict with his conscience or sincerely held moral or religious beliefs shall be excused from that portion of the course where such instruction is being given, and no penalties as to credit or graduation shall result therefrom." So the statute itself specifically provides for an opt-out provision for a parent if they have a problem as a result of conscience with it. There is no basis for an opt-in, so that is the procedural problem that a school district would face. The statute provides for an opt-out, but it does not provide for an opt-in process.
Okay. So now, let's move on to the topic of how this would actually play out in classroom, okay? So basically, when you look at what, I mean, and of course, the curriculum is not written yet, right? So that's another issue that remains ahead of us. But what I'm thinking is basically that as far as by the end of grade two, right? So that would be probably two days' worth of lessons, okay? That's what's different. That's it. It's two days' worth of lessons.
Two full days? Or two, like?
Two periods.
Two periods.
Two periods.
So we're in the periods and...
Two lessons, two lessons.
Three, thank you.
Maybe three, I mean, once the curriculum is written, but you're talking about a very short period of time, okay? So then you go to the fifth grade. That's probably same kind of similar thing, maybe one to two lessons. That's what would be different. Eighth grade, probably about the same thing. One, maybe two days, something like that. And as it stands right now, those lessons also would be delivered at the end of the marking period. So basically, at the elementary level, we have trimesters, right? So there's a rotation. Students would receive that at the end of the trimester. So none of this is going to be happening to start the school year, okay? And the other part is for the secondary, right? Those are quarterly, so end of the marking period is when the students would be given this instruction. The next part about it is, I mean, just like as a rhetorical question, and I don't know if it makes sense to like kind of continue, but the rhetorical question is, for the people who are on this side of the room, are you likely to ever agree with the people on the other side of the room? The answer is maybe on some things, but not on this, right? And same vice versa. You're probably not going to agree with the people on this side of the room, which is why I think that the legislators recognized what's happening or what would potentially happen and offered the opt-out, right? It's the bottom line, is they have an opt-out. So for these few periods during the school year where maybe you disagree with whatever the curriculum is, then you can have your child opt-out, vice versa, right? If there's something, so anybody has the ability, any parent. So the idea is that a group of people can't come to a board meeting and make a determination about what all parents are comfortable with. This group can't determine what this group has their children exposed to. Likewise, this group is unable to impose their will on the other side of the room, if you think about it that way, right? That's the idea. Likewise, the board does not have the flexibility to go ahead and say, "We're making a decision for all children and all parents." There is flexibility, but the flexibility is with you. And if you think about that, most of you at somewhere along the line, many of you have talked about parental rights, right? And so really what that is, is it puts it in the hands of the parents. The parents are the ones that get to decide about what's appropriate for their children and what's not appropriate. Now, as far as the district is concerned, I have, I've basically talked about these PE standards. We've provided you updates. We've talked about how this would play out in real life, right? Like, how's this going to look? And how would you be notified? Okay? So what I'd like to do is basically, if you have your phone, right? Right there is a QR code, right? And so we're going to have these QR codes. You'll be able to look any time you want, and you're able to get an update on what the Wayne Board of Ed is doing when it comes to health and PE standards. So that's all you're going to have to do. And the latest information about it will be available to you. And Bill, if you could, if you go to the next, could you advance it? Do you want to talk about this now?
Yeah, sure.
So Mrs. Reichman's going to talk about basically where we are. This is the latest news and the latest information.
In response to many of the questions that were raised at the last meeting, we put out a memo through Blackboard Connect. That's our communication vehicle. And we shared this on the website and on our social media channels for community members to access, recognizing that not all stakeholders are parents of children in the school, and you have a right to this information as well. We wanted to share it here tonight. So this is what was shared out last week. It went out through an email. It was on the social media channels. It's here tonight for you to view. I have heard from some parents, and, you know, in full transparency, I've heard from parents who share that they were very comfortable with the process, that they were very comfortable with the information. I've heard from other parents who feel differently and would like, you know, more information or express concern, as many of you shared tonight. So that's just really reemphasizing what Dr. Toback said, that there are differences of opinion. I think the most important thing is, you know, to just reiterate what the process is, we are sent broadcast from the Department of Education and detailing updates to standards, updates to curriculum that we're responsible for making. Each summer, we reapprove all of our curriculum, and all new curriculum updates are presented to the Ed Committee for Review. This is something that we do annually, and this will be included in that process. Teachers, whenever we write curriculum, we post, it becomes a job opportunity for teachers. This year, more so than ever before, the goal was to not disrupt classrooms, and I know the request was to have this before the end of school. There's been so many disruptions and a lot of lost time with instruction and concerns about not having consistency in education. The jobs were posted. Many of our teachers who are working on this work are also parents, and many of them live in the community. We always try to strike a balance and consider who the applicants are and who are the best people so that we have just a good balance in terms of skill sets, ideas, and contributions representing the majority of people. The work will be completed. I know there was a request to have it in July. We have made accommodations so that we could bring it to the Education Committee for Review. We also developed a Google form. We'll include links to the new lessons. We'll send them out this way so parents can click right on these lessons. You'll be able to view them. There will be full transparency. And Bill, can you just advance to the next slide? Many of you may already be familiar. Let's Talk is a platform that's easily accessible to any community members, whether you have children in school or you just have a vested interest, you live in the community, and you'd like to share input. We have already added a tab for health and PE standards. Whenever you're comfortable at any time, if there are ideas that, you know, you think of that you would like to express or communicate to us after this evening, you're welcome to communicate that way. Once the lessons are made available, we're asking you to share your feedback this way. We get hundreds of emails. So this way, they're all in one place, and we can put together a report and detail what is shared and best reflect to the board what the majority of the community is communicating to us and what individual stakeholders, everyone's ideas and thoughts count. In terms of keeping these lessons simple, we have a timeline, and that is also detailed here. In elementary school, we're not planning to facilitate any of this instruction until the last trimester of school. Ideally, it would be after Memorial Day, so there's plenty of time for continued conversations and input from parents. And if we need to go back and revisit, there's ample time. Health is in one quarter of instruction for all eighth graders. It would be in the last week of the health quarter. So that also gives plenty of time to share your feedback and ideas. Nobody is looking to create controversy or put anything out that would not consider all of your thoughts. And I think that the adjusted timeline will give us time to continue the discussion and seek your feedback. I plan to be in all of August. We have teachers who are invested in this work, and I know that there are many teachers who have children in our schools who have, who will be, I'm sorry, participating in this work. And that's really it. So we encourage you to use Let's Talk. We're reading your comments and your feedback, and we're interested to hear your concerns. And, you know, the hope is to work together as a community to best meet the needs and do what we're tasked with in a way that people are comfortable, and again, providing that opt-out option.
Thank you, Mrs. Reichman.
So you don't have a September deadline?
Excuse me.
So you don't have a September deadline?
Excuse me.
Well, before you look at these terms, you would say I tried to get your attention and ask if I could ask a question.
Okay.
Okay?
Excuse me.
Well, I wanted to let them know.
Well, you just wait for the big news. We'll start there.
You could come up.
You promised this big news. It's not.
Mr. Robertson, you can ask questions after the meeting. Be happy to answer them. Thank you. Okay. All right.
So you have a September deadline?
New business.
Go ahead, new business.
I'm sorry, I'm an ad president. If I could, I apologize for being tardy once again. It's important for me to return here. I did miss much of what was talked about before, but I, without pointing out, some of my colleagues, I have had private conversations with them, and this is a work in progress. Nothing is written in stone at this point, all right? Am I optimistic? Yes, I'm optimistic. I feel that all of us can get along, gay, straight, transgender, however you identify yourself, we're a community. I didn't move into this community because I wanted to be just in a, and I'll say it, in a white dominant community that is anti-gay or anti-lesbian or any of that. I'm here because this is a great community that all of us can strive and do better for all of our children. I didn't get asked to be elected on this board without the intentions of working for our children. That being said, you, and I've said this before, and I'll reiterate it again, what you're complaining about to us is what is being forced upon us by our state legislator. If you have an issue with this, we are the end of the road. If you have the issue with it, now, please, let me finish. It's the last time that somebody didn't let me finish. They got their way. So let's not go down that road. We are the end of the road. This has been voted on by the state legislator and is being told by us. Now, prior to this meeting, we were told last time that the resolution that was brought up, we would be violating the state law. And all board members, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misspeaking, we were told that we would violate the state law if we voted on the resolution that was presented. If we violate the state law, I would encourage every person who stood at the podium today, and I have no idea, it's 11 o'clock, so I have no idea, I'm assuming there was enough, what they would like to cut in schools. Would you like band cut or whatever cut, because our state aid will be slashed if we violate the law. However, I was informed today that there is a way that we can redefine or take out certain terms. Whether that happens or not, I can't sit here and promise you I'm not the man behind the curtain. I wish I was, but I could tell you that I sit on a dais with a bunch of people that have concerns for one side and the other, but all have the same goal in mind of our children learning and being in part of a great school system. That I can tell you without a doubt. And yeah, we have our differences, absolutely, 100%. But without, we all are trying to work together because this is something that was shoved down our throat. We didn't ask for this. We didn't lobby for this. This is something that came to us. So this is what we have to deal with. And I understand all of your concerns on this side of the room and that side of the room, but that's what we're dealing with, to try to find a common ground, a medium way that we can deal with it. Do I believe that some of these conversations need to be talked around the dinner table and not in the classroom? 100%. But that's not what the state says. The state says right now, as far as we know, this is what we have to do. And that's where we're at now, and what we're putting in place now with the online surveys and all that is finding out where the community stands. And you have to bear with us because, like I said, this, we are at the end of the road, and it's getting shoved down our throat, all right? I understand. I understand. I understand that...
Communists don't have this culture.
I understand. So in November, show up and vote. I encourage it. That's the democratic process. That's what everybody's right is.
And you know what's supposed to be saying?
I'm sorry, but if that wasn't the news that you were all promised, I apologize. But that's how I feel, and like I said, if there's anybody on this dais that feels different, they can have their moment to speak. Sorry, but thank you.
I love our policemen. Thank you so much for everything you do. It seems to me that...
Excuse me. I'm sorry. This is not the time for you to speak, ma'am. This is not the time to speak.
Ma'am, we have to conduct the meeting. We still have to complete the meeting.
This is not the time to speak.
We would ask that you control yourself.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Please. Okay. Any other board member have comment?
I do.
Mr. Fattal.
First, I'd like to start off by thanking my colleagues, the board, Mayor Vergano and Chief McNiff for putting something together that we could continue to keep our students safe and putting a goal for putting police officers in every one of our schools. It's something, in my opinion, that's 20 years overdue and should have happened a long time ago. We cannot put a price on our kids' safety. Ms. Jen, I do have to agree with you. Class sizes are important, and when we do go to the retreat, it is a topic of conversation with the development, and it is something that we all have to look at as the development comes into this town. Tori, yes, I did abstain. And as Mr. Geppert started elaborating more on certain things, we're understanding the legalities of the curriculum and what we can and can't do. I was going to touch on the opt-in, opt-out. Unfortunately, I got beat to the punch in regards to that.
Unfortunately, I got beat to the punch in regards to that. I do have my opinions about the curriculum and phrases or terms that are in there that are alarming to me and I did bring up to my colleagues. And they respected my decisions. They might not agree with me, but they have respected my decisions. Though I don't put that out in the public so everybody knows that or post it on social media, I do have my opinions as well. I'm sorry, because I took a ton of notes tonight and I'm all over the place. We were, we did receive a letter with a bunch of names on it. One of the last, the first sentence of the last paragraph, "We have every confidence that this community-elected board will perform its due diligence and weigh in the consequences of this decision, and we expect that the right choice will be made when considering the gravity of this matter." I agree with you and I do think that we will be doing that going forward. I do thank you for everybody who did sign this and did provide, and I was provided a copy of this. I will be going through this again, even though I have read it multiple times. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name when you spoke before with the microphone. Yes. Thank you for speaking and I do, I do agree with you that the local Board of Ed does have the power to determine what goes into this curriculum. And it is something that we all have to sit down and work on as a group. And I do believe that the administration, and kudos to Harry for help pushing that up from that September date to getting it into July, is something that we do have to work on so we are more transparent with the people who did vote us into office and the people who didn't vote us into office, everybody. So everybody knows where we stand on this subject matter. Nick, I'm sorry to hear that some of your classmates are being bullied, but I hope that you and your friends do stick up for them and do help put an end to that because that is very important. That being said, because I'm having a hard time reading the rest of my chicken scratch, if I could read some of this, at next meeting I will get back to you on this. But again, thank you, everybody, for coming out, expressing your opinions and how you feel about everything tonight because it did not go unacknowledged. I did acknowledge everybody. And I do think everybody does bring valid points and concerns to the podium when they speak. But next time, you'll have five minutes to talk.
Thank you. Mr. Pavlak?
Just quickly, you know, people are, people are throwing terms around curriculum lesson plans. And yes, I did abstain on the motion at the last meeting. The lesson plan is probably the most important educational document there is. That's what the teacher uses in the classroom. That's why I keep saying, and I've said it every week up here, I want to see the lesson plan. That's where we have the latitude of how it's going to be delivered in the classroom. Take the curriculum, put it on the side. I want to see how that's going to be delivered in the classroom. We can massage that, all right? As somebody said, one of the speakers tonight, it doesn't have to be graphic. Do I agree with it all? No. But I think you've heard from enough people and some people who do this for a living legally, that there's consequences to it. I was a police officer for 34 years. There's a lot of laws out there I didn't agree with. But you know what? At the end of the day, still had to follow them. I assure you, I will look at this, at every lesson plan when it comes out. And it's going to be here. You heard again tonight, this isn't something that's going to be taught week one. It's going to be taught later in the year. And yes, we'll have times. In fact, I'd even ask the administration, come September, you know, the end of September, once everybody's back, let's have a community roundtable with the second grade parents, with the fifth grade parents. So there is no question about what it is and how it's going to be done. And Jen, I think it was, yeah, we have to work on that. That is an issue that was brought, I brought up about, you know, it's just not health and PE because in today's world, we're teaching math, science, and everything else too. All right? Thank you.
Mrs. Wintek?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much, parents, for coming and speaking to us. Can you can hear me? Oh, sorry. Since I was personally addressed, I wanted to say I am for teaching acceptance. It has nothing to do with acceptance. We, in my family, have some members who would fall into the LGBT group and we love them. Since they came out, there was no, we did not skip a beat. And that's just how our family is. I teach my children of acceptance and the golden rule every day. I rather tell them, include everyone as opposed to exclude one. Nobody likes to be excluded. But I am a parent. I have a 14, almost 18, and an eight-year-old, and I worry about my kids. And I want to make sure, whatever we do, and we do have to agree on going forward, that it's age-appropriate. And that's kind of where I feel the parents struggle with some of the terminology and being age-appropriate. So I'll end it here. Just wanted to congratulate all the seniors coming out of Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills. I'm excited next week for looking at them at the graduation. So congratulations to teachers as well. Great job this year. Thank you.
Ooh, I want to drop my pride flag. Where to begin? I'll tell you what bothers me. You think I'm disrespectful. I am not meaning to be disrespectful, but I can't always, it's not my goal to be disrespectful. I'm here to listen and I do listen. However, I do have a problem with one thing that members of the public do, and I'm not going to point out any individual, misinformation. Misinformation serves no good purpose. What we need is, if you want to come up here and talk to us about what we're doing or not doing, you need to cite that accurately because otherwise, the community gets the wrong idea and we're not doing our job, which is to make sure that you're properly and fully informed about what we're doing. I sit here and I have people mouthing to me, I'm crazy. This is what I have to tolerate while I'm sitting up here. It's a little distracting. I'm disrespectful? Don't get me started. For some reason, people seem to think it's appropriate to send me these social media posts about me. Trust me, I don't read them. I'm not interested in them. I don't get my facts from Facebook. I don't give a rat's patoot what you have to say about me on Facebook. By all means, tell me to my face. I'll listen. It's my job to listen. I enjoy listening, but I don't enjoy misinformation. We have standards here. By all means, cite them. That is what we have to work with. We don't have a choice in the matter. Whether I agree or disagree is moot, but one thing I will say, I will stand up strongly and fiercely for the LGBTQ community, clearly. The gentleman who got up and talked about the suicide, we had a former student here several months ago and he talked about how he thought about suicide often in high school because all they ever taught was vaginal sex. He felt like he was a freak. He was an outcast. He was treated differently. The way we plan to teach it is simple. Like the other gentleman said, not everyone's heterosexual. And our students are not all heterosexual. Isn't that clear? They came here this evening. And you also have the option to opt-out. But that is something I will stand up for. I think the experts, who I absolutely know for a fact, child psychologists were consulted, pedagogy experts were consulted, age-appropriate doctors were consulted. Everyone was consulted when the State Board of Education was considering these standards. You don't have to agree with them. I don't necessarily think everything about them is perfect, but I will rely on the administration to hug that line closely because we do know that there are people in our community that aren't pleased with it. And you also, of course, have the option to opt-out. And that's important because there are people who are okay with the curriculum and think that it's important that we include everyone in our community, in our classes. And I'll leave it at that. But the misinformation, yeah, that's what bothers me. And again, if you have anything to say to me, contact me directly. You can skip the Facebook. Thank you.
So I have a lot of notes here and I definitely know that some people were looking at me as far as whether or not I was or was not paying attention. Believe me, I wrote it all down about what everyone has said. And I generally write everything down at a meeting, so I have notes. So anyway, there were some pieces of misinformation and I will cite them as someone who has, again, Chair of the Ed Committee, have, like, really have to know these standards. First of all, Mr. Robertson, you stated curriculum and lessons, but we don't have, like, lessons. They don't exist. So that's the first part. Mr. Esposito cited gender queer as part of our curriculum. It is not in our curriculum. It is in the library. It is not part of our curriculum. And also, there was citation of someone by Mr. Robertson that went through early puberty. We are talking about puberty as part of these lessons. That's really important. So why are we railing against the fact that we're having a puberty discussion? That he, I don't know why that was even brought up. As far as this, there were other people, again, that stated they had a problem with terminology. So you're okay with teaching vaginal sex, but you're not okay with talking about oral or anal sex. Let me, let me talk to you about something that happened to me my freshman year in high school. A bunch of the boys and girls were talking about different sex acts. Guess what? They were heterosexual and talking about these sex acts. So, and you're taught it in eighth grade, so you're ready for high school. This is an eighth-grade topic because the average age of students becoming sexually active is around 14 in our area, or even younger, depending on the town you're living in. So.
Excuse me.
So taking a look at those demographics, as someone whose husband is a pediatrician and we actually go over this health information all of the time, it's very important to me that these students understand the repercussions of such actions so that they don't contract STIs, so that they don't become pregnant, so that they actually do understand that abstinence is an option. But if we don't talk about it and prepare them for it, how can we prevent it? How can we allow them to have bodily autonomy over themselves to say no to a boyfriend or a girlfriend? That's part of it. And you can choose, as we have said, to opt-out of that lesson, but plenty of parents opt-in. And I can tell you that I was taught that in eighth grade in New Jersey. Okay? Thank you.
Just one more thing. Oh, Mrs. Kazan.
I'm sorry. There was just one thing I wanted to say to the teachers that got up and mentioned that these are your kids. Thank God you feel that way. Because if we're going to have a child in your care, we have, there's a, there's a legal term for when your child is in a school building. It's in loco parentis. That means in the absence of the parent. Is that, is that the definition, Mr. Geppert? That means when you're not there, that teacher is their parent. It's a legal term that's used in education. And again, thank God, because I want that person to love my child and your child so much that they would protect them from harm, that they would get in front of a shooter for them.
Thank you.
We would all stand in front of the shooter for anyone's kids. Not just the teachers, not just the gay teachers.
Excuse me.
Not pro-gay LGBT people, whatever.
Excuse me.
We would die for our kids and everyone else's kids.
We have a public portion. You may come up and speak at the next meeting. Thank you. I would like to thank our administration, who worked with our mayor and the town council and Chief McNiff, the Police Department, so that we can move forward to have more Class III officers in our school buildings in the coming year. Given the state of the nation as it is, we need to take those precautions for our students and for our teachers and staff. There is nothing to see here now because there are no lessons. You will see the lessons. I don't know of any other area that's being taught in the school where you see the actual lesson. You might see the math book, but you don't really see how the teacher's teaching the lesson. There's going to be a lot of transparency when it comes to this area, health and PE. I'm a grandmother of three children under the age of three. They will be going to Wayne Public Schools. I want them to have an education. I want them to know the facts. I do not want them to be hyper-sexualized during their early childhood. And I think that is the fear that many of you have. We are not looking to do that. We want to keep them safe and we will give them age-appropriate information. Have a good evening. We look forward to all the graduations next week. Thank you very much.